Called a meeting to order. I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we come to you in prayer asking for your intervention. For those grieving from a loss, grant them comfort. For those lost and suffering from addiction, we ask your healing hands to show them the way. For all of us who have sinned, forgive us. When we hear your words, you restore us. You show us compassion and love in all that you do. Lead us to live our lives in honor of you and show us the way that we may show others. We pray in your holy name. Amen. Tonight, we are honored to have with us some of the students from East Albemarle School who have completed a project and they are going to come forward and read us their project. Ms. McGuire, would you come forward and introduce your students and bring them forward?
Thank you.
And tell us a little bit about the program.
Yes, thank you so much for having us tonight. This is our third annual community partnership project where East Albemarle Mayor Ronnie Michael and County Manager Andy Lucas agree on a prompt that all of our students will write about. This year, the prompt was, "What do you think is the biggest challenge or problem in your community and what can you do to solve it?" The prompt had to be simplified for some of our grades, but tonight, we have a few of the winners and we would like for them to read their writing. We had several that were sick and couldn't make it tonight, but we are excited to have with us kindergartner Khalil Harris. Khalil, can you read your writing?
Where I live, I wish I had a playground.
Good job. And we've got first grader Kayden Sellers.
Where I live, I mean, a big problem where I live is people driving too fast.
People are driving too fast, so thank you for sharing that. And we've got second grader Erin Addens.
I can't change my community by talking to them.
Boys, when I see them, boy, other people.
Great job, great job. And then we have fifth grader Jaden Green. And we didn't plan for this to be an all-boys group, but it is tonight.
Hi, my name is Jaden. I want to tell you about the Amazon packages that are being stolen throughout the world. I think that the biggest challenge that faces our community is the people stealing Amazon boxes off of other people's porches. If you have seen the videos of people trying to take their Amazon passes off of other people's porches, I know it probably makes you very mad, and that is why I want to put them in jail where they belong. I think that stealing is very bad. You don't have the steel to have something. You can just go to Amazon and buy whatever it is with your own money yourself. I think if Amazon can put an alarm and a tracker on the box, it will go off if it gets 1,000 meters away and start tracking the box, and the police department can track them down and put them in prison. The fine will be what the package originally cost, and the person who took the package will also have to give the package back. I think we need to stop all this nonsense because stealing is wrong. I think we can make a difference together in Albemarle. Thank you so much for letting me tell you about the robberies that we have gone on around Albemarle, North Carolina.
Counsel, let's step out and take a picture with the students.
Yes, we love photo ops. And we invite everybody to come to school and read all of the students' writing. We had lots of interesting topics.
You have a lot of folks show up to read the other day.
It's the reading day.
Yes, we do. Hang it right here.
That was pretty cool. One day.
Next, we have a couple of special presentations for some of our employees that are retiring. First is Scotty D. Poplin. Scotty, you will come up and bring anybody you want with you. Tell her to come on up. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Scotty D. Poplin, who on January 1st, 2019, retired from employment with the City of Albemarle after 29.17 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Albemarle, the mayor and the city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Second is John L. Griffith.
Golly.
You can bring all you want.
He just started.
You want to come?
In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to John L. Griffith, who on January 1st, 2019, retired from employment with the City of Albemarle after 28.75 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Albemarle, the mayor and the city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life. Sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Mayor, he did just start with the police department. Just yesterday.
Can't be 29 years.
This is continuing trend of a lot of retirees over the last few months and the few months to come, so we're losing a lot of experience and looking for new employees. So if you have anyone that's looking for jobs, I encourage you to look on our website. We have a lot of job openings and looking for employees. Thank you. Number four, consider approval of the January 22 regular session and January 22 closed session minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Lauder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I have no agenda adjustments. Announced delegations, Mr. Brandon David Burlison to request a peddler license.
How are you all doing?
Good.
Good, good, good.
Just stand here?
Yes, sir. Tell us your name and address and tell us what you want to do.
My name's Brandon David Burlison. I live at 617 East Cannon Avenue. My plan was to do, basically sell ice cream at some downtown events that we might have, like the Beach Blast, certain things like that, because I know those things would sell very well. I know it's seasonal, so that's one niche that I won't be able to do, of course, in February. But if I could, I would. And if I could do some things indoors, that'd be great, too. But I definitely understand the certain things about, I have to have people's consent to be on their property, so I would not do that without proper consent. But as far as the downtown things, I do understand that I would need certain permits to do that with the downtown development and things of that nature. So I would definitely go through everything that I would need to go through so that I could do it the correct way.
Have you also talked to the health department?
Yes, I have talked with the health department, and my plan was to not do anything like scooping any ice cream, because then I run into, you know, have to be inspected, I have to be kind of working with the restaurant, because that means I have to store some of the items in their coolers and freezers. So I don't have that luxury, so I thought, well, why don't I just do prepack? And that was my plan. That way, I'm not handling anything, I'm handling money, but everything's prepackaged, so I'm not cross-contaminating anything. So that was kind of the best way I could think of, to still do this to make it as easy as possible. You know, and, you know, I have a small vehicle, but I'm going to make it work, you know, to transport the product back and forth. I'll be buying it in Charlotte at a wholesale company, and then I can transport it back. And as far as power, that was another concern of mine, and I'm not quite sure how that would go whenever we would go through to events. If I'm outside, like at the square or something, I'm not sure if there is power out there, but the thing is, I can actually use dry ice, which I can purchase at several different places, even here in town. And that one 10-pound block of dry ice would hold, you know, a freezer full of ice cream for all day long, even in the summertime, without power. So I could definitely make that happen if power is not available.
If you're coming to an event sponsored by Downtown Development, they can help you with the power.
Okay, that would be great.
Counsel, have any questions?
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve the request for a peddler license.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Number six, Mr. Scott Malden, request for special permit for CrossFit Albemarle.
Good evening. Sorry for the attire, we just came from actually teaching, so we want to make sure we get up here. What we're looking, this is Sarah Sumner, by the way, she's my business partner.
Scott, give me your name and address now.
Scott Malden, 34508 Lisa Drive in Albemarle.
Thank you.
So what we're looking to do, this is Sarah Sumner, we're looking to put on a, it's a CrossFit competition or a fitness competition. I own CrossFit Albemarle right down here on Main Street, just near the farmer's market. We're looking to put on a competition that's going to be not all day, maybe four or five hours of the day, inviting competitors all over, from all over, to include Charlotte, probably some from Raleigh and the Concord area coming in. I think we're looking for upwards of...
Between 23 and 30 teams, so that would, upwards and...
So we're looking at 50 to 75 competitors, plus they're, they always bring friends with them, so yeah, we're looking at coaches and athletes, probably about 500 people into the area. But what we were looking to do was use some of the street. The whole idea that we love about this area is that we get to torture people running up that hill. I believe there's an 81-foot elevation change from our front door just up to the east side of First Street. So we're looking to utilize that hill and make it safe for the competitors to do so. I work for the federal government, so I understand asking for the world and getting a state is very acceptable. Ideally, I mean, we would love to have the whole road, Main Street, from Railroad Street up to the east side of First Street, but I know, I don't want to cause any issues with emergency services having to get through places. I've worked for the police department for, I understand that, but when we started looking at it, that we're only looking to close it down for certain times.
Think technically, it would be from 9:00 a.m. until about 1:45, so not even the full day.
So your original request was much longer than that. You can make it work from 9:00 to 1:30 or 1:45?
1:45 to 2:00.
Now, that's a state-maintained road.
Yeah, she will have to turn around and go to DOT.
Absolutely.
They have to have our approval first.
Correct.
Mayor, one of the concerns is the fire chief, and they have altered their hours and all, but will he agree with this?
You started before saying something about not the entire road. What was you starting to say?
Ideally, we would love to have at least the westbound side, just for the safety of the athletes running up the hill. But if we needed to take, I think we...
Spectators as well.
Yeah, spectators.
So, but you'd still need the whole road, as I understand it, is that what you're saying?
We wouldn't need it. I don't know how traffic would get through there. We would have one lane available for traffic, but again, we don't want to impede emergency services. I'll take a state, which would, I think we looked at the sidewalk and the parking spots, the parking spots would be enough room for us to do it safely.
Oh.
What would actually be in the street? Would you have anything in the street other than...
Make cones and something to mark it off. We would probably, we're going to be crossing Depot Street, so that may be a street we would have to have at least closed for the duration of the event.
Have you talked to the business owners along that street?
Yes, sir, no one's open on Sunday.
At least on Sunday.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. That changes everything.
I said the same thing, because Saturday was like, I got a lot of, a lot of logistical issues came up, and when I said Sunday, I walked up and down the street.
I didn't even look at the date.
Are you planning on having someone at Main Street and 52 and at Main Street and First? Is that going to be manned the entire time you're going to have it closed?
We're going to have lots of volunteers helping out with that.
So somebody could stay at each end in case emergency traffic had to get through?
Absolutely, and we could, I mean, I could reach out to the police department if we need to hire some off-duty officers to do that as well.
Sean, that would handle the issue. Fire chief says he's okay with that, and that was our major concern, being able to get fire trucks to the other side of town.
What about blocking Depot? Should it be blocked down?
I think Depot would have to block on both sides.
Yeah, down, not just at Main Street, but down, so nobody would come on.
Correct.
They would put road closed ahead, I believe, because you would probably want to use that for some parking.
Yes, sir, yeah, it's going to be enjoyable trying to find some parking for everybody, but we'll see. It's our first one, she's done several of these in different locations, so I'm just trying to bring it to Albemarle.
Event, I would say 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so by you blocking the road off for a limited time, will your event still last to 8:00?
No, sir, that was my, I put down, I had no idea. I was trying to, I just came off a 35-day furlough. So during that time, I was trying to do a lot of running around, and I wanted to get that, I went from one place to the next to the next, and I wanted to get that information in as early as possible so that I knew we could get this in plenty of time.
So you're basically talking 9:00 to 2:00, and you'll have both ends manned or hire police, one or the other, to make sure someone's there the whole time.
And Depot, and Depot.
So if emergency vehicle needs to come through, they can get them through.
No, just only comment, and I don't believe in thinking out loud, that is Palm Sunday. I don't think that there is a church anywhere in that area, because you're just going up to First, right?
Yeah, and we're not even crossing First, just...
Okay, that would be doing anything, I don't see anything that would include that. That is Palm Sunday, though.
Lutheran or...
Because they wouldn't be going up just to First, they're just staying on West Main.
Counsel, have any further questions?
I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve the request, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion.
And I think it's not the request as written, but as presented.
As presented from 9:00 to 2:00. Further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Don't break a leg.
Number seven, your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing that, I'll move on to number eight, new business ordinance 1904, budget amendment to appropriate funds for sewer rehabilitation. Counsel, will have any questions on this?
Move approval of 1904.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number nine, consider unsealing the closed session minutes. At the last meeting, we made it public that we had been discussing with attorneys and all about a lawsuit. You can now open these minutes, and we need to open these minutes, have no reason to hold them now that it's been made public.
Move approval June 16, July 07, and July 21. I believe that was a 14. Yeah, June 16, a 14, July 7th, a 14, July 21st, a 14.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 10, a quarterly business report. Mr. Robinson.
I know that back in 2017, we did these pretty much as a quarterly kind of thing, and we're going to get back to that. We had some technical difficulties and then staffing difficulties with keeping up with these last year. So this is more of an annual report for 2018 here. We have broken down each one of the quarters for you, and the maps look a little bit different. Other than that, we tried to stick with relatively the same format. One of the biggest differences you'll see now is that since we're going, but we're a year out on these, we're actually, when we went back, we actually found some businesses that had closed, so not really large businesses or anything like that, but we were able to adjust and actually give kind of an adjusted total at the end of each one of these months, so probably a little bit more accurate as to what was actually happening in 2018 there. So I'll scroll through those and you can see those. Then, in, overall, I was kind of surprised, first three quarters of the year, we had quite a few new businesses opening. They were mostly small businesses, though. We didn't have a whole lot of new jobs being created. In fact, we're probably a little bit below each one of the quarters back in 2017, but in quarter four, really made up for that in the late fall and winter of 2018 with around 147 jobs being created. We do have one new category on here. I spoke with Mark, and we had, with Inforge, we had some business expansion and retention. We had a pretty significant amount of jobs on there we wanted to include. We don't get coordination forms, and it's kind of hard to track some of these things when we have large businesses that do expand, so that's why we kind of get together and try to add those in where we can. And again, this is not, there's not an exact science, there's no way of knowing exactly who all's lost jobs and everything, but I think it's a good indicator overall of how we're growing here in the city. We have some, we put these together so you can compare them side by side, 2017 and 2018. As we showed, there was a little bit less through the first couple of months and the significant drop-off in the, or in the first couple of quarters, a significant drop-off in the third quarter, and then quarter four, we really, that's usually kind of a slower part of the year, and we really gained a lot of jobs in. So overall, we had what we were estimating to be about a 21.3% increase in job growth from 2017 to 2018.
And these are calendar years, not fiscal years.
These are calendar years, that's right, that's right. And if you prefer, we can go to fiscal years on those as well, so...
This is good.
This was just, this was helpful to us, since we were missing four quarters worth of data to go ahead and throw them in like this, so...
Counsel, have any questions?
Not nitpicking, but on the fourth quarter list. 304 Montgomery, is that where we would know is the old Quality Grocery?
340, I'm not familiar with the historic name of that. That's the strip, little strip development right there on the street, yeah.
We need to look out, we need to, somebody needs to go by there on a regular basis.
Yeah.
That, I mean, there's stuff on the, there's all kinds of stuff, that's what it is, because I can't tell what most of it is, on the sidewalk, out to the road, into the road, and across the street.
All of that's gone.
Yeah, I think there may be a little bit, yeah, a little bit that had come back, I think, as recently as a day ago, but we're going to keep on that.
There was stuff there on Friday, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll have to keep on that, and also went by and talked with them about parking up on the sidewalk and stuff, too. That was becoming an issue, so...
Well, I noticed it, and that's where the paint, that's where they were painting, and okay, gotcha, thank you.
Counsel, have any further questions?
I just want to say thank you for doing this. I think it's very important that we, that we bring to light, I mean, I think activity breeds activity. And when you look at the increase from 2018 over 2017, I think that's, I think that's good news. Anytime we get reports like this, I think it's good news, so keep it coming.
And I think we're getting, we're getting a little bit better with how we tally all this stuff up. I know we had a lag there, obviously, for a while, but we're going to include these in our coordination forms, actually just a three or four question thing at the end there. We'll keep it optional, but we're going to allow that anybody that's come in, we'll ask them these key questions. Are you new business? Are you adding jobs? How many jobs? That'll help us to kind of automate this and track that a little bit easier also.
Home and personal privilege question.
Sure.
So I was at the county commissioners' meeting prior to coming tonight, and the East Albemarle children, some of the East Albemarle children, we read that it says they're there. The kindergartner that read at the commissioners' meeting said that he thought his issue, that the problem in the town where he lived was that Chick-fil-A was not opening quick enough. And you ought to have heard, everybody in that room was just, that's exactly, he was on tap. Give us, do you have any idea what the status of that? I mean, we can tell the glass is up and everything else. You don't know?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, they're progressing, they're onside. I haven't done any kind of checkup with them really in the past, probably about two and a half, three weeks, so...
Okay, well, I mean, everybody in there was...
Seeing what's happening, and no good, no news is good news as far as I'm concerned when it comes to that.
The original comment was hope to be open by spring.
Right, I think April was what they were shooting for.
Yeah, and they should probably be close to that.
I think so, yeah.
Yep, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Number 11, consider appointment to Historic Resources Commission. You see in your agenda, we have two individuals that have wishing to step down. We have one individual that wishes to be appointed, they put in an application, Marvin Smith.
Move appoint Marvin Smith.
To the seat held by Zelma Udi?
Yeah, because she, yes, because Roger has said he would stay on until we get somebody.
Have a motion to appoint Marvin Smith to suit, help, seat held by Zelma Udi.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Michael, I think you have one item you need to get counsel's attention.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Just got a notice in the mail today about the February Stanley County Cog meeting, which will be held in Oakboro at their new community building at the Oakboro District Park, and just wanted to get a head count.
When is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, the 26th of February.
I'm good. Go to Oakboro. Go to Oakboro. We'll ride together out there. We'll come get you. I'll come get you, or one way or the other.
And we'll meet at the City Hall parking lot at 6:00 in Carpool.
Okay, all right.
You said 26?
Yes, February 26.
Be at the City Hall parking lot 6:00.
Mr. Bieber, I understand that you said we now have to publish a notice for four consecutive weeks on closing that alleyway, or that unopened road.
We went to the research, I thought maybe we researched it, and she sent us some information where we ran it before, and in that, in those instances, we got to post a notice at the end of each end of the road, which we were shutting down, and we also had to send a registered letter or certified letters to the property owners who were enjoying that, which are gated up. And then we had to run an ad, we were dispatching, last time, we ran it once a week, which accepted fees.
Since this is an unopened road that we surround it on both sides, do we have anybody to send a notice to, since we own the property all around it?
Michael, I'm supposed to, you know, I only get some notice of yourself, obviously, but I didn't know if anybody else joined that side, city or not. If you, if you surround it, then no.
Okay. Counsel, we need to cancel the public hearing that was scheduled for our next meeting, and we will reschedule that at a later date. I'll air paint a motion.
And that was, that was to close...
The public hearing, since we've got to do a four-week notice before we can hold a public hearing, we need to cancel that, and we'll reschedule it later.
But that public hearing was to close the, excuse, Spalding?
Spalding Street, unopened porch.
It's a pretty prominent survey, especially this one. The level of last ones we did, we had natural boundaries all the way around. We had property owners, I mean, we used that to our description, and we would have that in this situation. I understand, in fairness, that the survey will be done after the upset bid.
After the upset bid process.
Maybe we take off the agenda, the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to cancel the public hearing for our next scheduled meeting on the 18th. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Sure.
What's the reason for delaying that?
We can't do it without doing a four-week notice in a newspaper, and we can't hold the public hearing to after that has been advertised for four consecutive weeks.
Okay, and when did you reschedule it?
We have not. We'll reschedule it after we get the survey and do the, and know the date.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, once we get the survey, we'll take that moment, I think, because I... Mayor, once we get the survey, it won't take so long, I don't think, because my guess is that the report is in a flat, so it'd be fairly described, and then I'll be able to get the notes ready very quickly.
Okay. Is this holding them up? Is this piece up? They're okay. I talked to them, they're okay. But we were hoping to close it quicker than that, and we just will not be able to close until after we get that done, so. Coming around, Mr. Ferris.
I don't have any to add.
Mr. Townsend?
I'll just point out that we got some members of our Leadership Stanley class here tonight, and I thought they were worthy to be recognized.
Well, get stand-ups, yeah.
Let's make them stand up and introduce themselves.
That's right, yeah.
Come on forward and introduce yourselves.
Come to the mic.
Come up to the mic.
Come on up, don't sit there and hide.
This is good public, good free advertisement. Come up and introduce yourselves.
Tiffany said that's payback.
But you can come on.
Two Fridays. I'm Tiffany Dale. I own Tiffany's at the boardroom.
Thank you.
I'm Jeremy Forsyth. I'm the ranger at Camp Barnhart.
Thank you.
I'm Jeremy Hathcock. I'm a fellow supervisor of Dexter Townsend.
Hi, I'm Marietta Abernathy. I'm the chief nurse executive at CHS Stanley.
And I'm Jessica Benoy. I'm the branch manager at First Bank on Highway fifty-two.
Got anyone in the council that you've learned so far?
Not that they don't want to.
No volunteers here?
I'm glad they're here.
I hope you're enjoying the class, though. I sure enjoyed it when I went through it. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Townsend, you have any further?
No, that's it.
Ms. Hughes?
Just a shout out to East Alamoale Elementary School. Some of us went there last Friday to read to the kids, and I think I got more out of it probably than they did, but that was wonderful to be around those children and read a book that day. Also, Pfeiffer, there was movement today on the dirt, the trees got gone.
If you'll hang tight, we got something on that in just a minute.
It's real, it's exciting. It's finally here, so that's it.
Mr. Aldrich?
Not much, just if anybody's out and about on Saturday morning, be careful. The Fellowship of the Idiot Run is starting Saturday morning about five-thirty.
Are you an idiot?
No, well, I am, but no, I'm not running it, so.
Nineteen point seven.
But nevertheless, you'll have several hundred people, most of which are from out of Stanley County. Peter Oshuto does that twice a year, and that's this coming Saturday. So they'll start about five-thirty, they'll leave from the wild run to the top of the mountain and back, so.
Top of Moore Mountain.
So just be careful if you're out and about.
Ms. Louder?
Only thing I would ask is that you be a little bit slower when you're taking, making motions and second, and the only thing, you're having a hard time catching up. I understand.
I'm slow.
I understand. Mr. Bramlett? Well, while you're there, we, Owen, where's Owen? You ready to play that, start that video?
It was so.
Since we were talking about Pfeiffer, Owen and Chris have come together, Owen's going to start something, and I'm going to let Chris make a comment on it about the project today.
I'll describe real quick. Thanks, Mayor, Counsel. What we did, Nia put it together for us actually, but there's a short video of the deconstruction of the old museum property and some of the changes, what we're seeing. The website has the link for a time lapse that you can look at individual days and a complete time lapse from beginning of it. So we'll, I'll show you the video, and then I'll show you today. That's not captured yet as part of the time lapse, but the video, here we go. So this is showing just saying, and now come the deconstruction that I believe Michael Ferris had captured when this was going on. I didn't put music to it, so come on.
I wonder what music it might have been.
That would be interesting. What would you put with that?
Another one bites the dust.
Yeah, another one bites the dust. That'd be good.
And another one bites the dust, is that what you?
That's what.
Capture from the snap and their article.
Cold day.
And this is the seventeenth, from seven o'clock in the morning till one o'clock at night, just showing people gathering before the groundbreaking.
Yeah, there's a link out there.
No, in this video.
Yeah, I think that's what you just said, this is all, so you can go.
I'm saying all this is on the website, too, that you can look back at, too, but. Well, now is pull up the live feed. You know, if you go to the department's page on the site, at the bottom of the economic development, is the Pfeiffer University Project page, and there, the link to the live view. So this is live right now, but if you look off to the left, there's this little tab here, and that will let you view any individual day of a time lapse. So today's the, this is the time lapse for today, be able to see what, what all happened. And the fog is just steam coming off of the boilers on top of the courthouse. But, you know, down at the bottom, you see it's three AM, et cetera, it's cycling through here.
Some folks who live around there have got good surveillance.
If you've been by there today, you'll notice that they've got all the fencing up around the property, they're started tearing out the sidewalks, they've grubbed all the shrubbery, so they've done quite a bit today.
Yep, there they go.
We need one of those cameras on Chick-fil-A.
For a little bit of money, we could do that.
It's funny though, watching this, how.
What this does is, you know, the daily time lapse is, is two frames every five minutes, so it's, it's just a, you know, a couple of frames from video that's captured and saved.
Look at the trees.
It's absolutely amazing.
Look at the, that's pretty cool.
It's, it's coming up to, right now, so, and again, this is, anybody can, can look at it and see over the course of it, but, you know, we go back to any day that there's, you know, going back to the sixteenth here, you can look at any particular day. What it cycles is, it keeps thirty days, and then it rotates off, so, but the long lapse at the top here is since it began, so.
And you're saving some of these so you can put it as a video at the end, right?
Yes, right. And say, we're capturing a month worth, so we keep each month's worth of detail.
Chris, anything you'd like to say?
I sure would. You know, if you study history, you know that all of history is sort of segmented into intervals separated by great events. Everything that's happened in Alamoale is one series. Today marks the beginning of a future that we can't even dream of yet. We're going to start in a couple of years, having two to three hundred graduate students in physician assistant and a doctorate in occupational therapy, living and going to school in downtown Alamoale. And I truly believe that over time, we're going to see that whole end of town develop into an academic village. If you look through all cultures and all societies, there is no better lifestyle than that that's found in an academic community, and we're about to experience that here. This group can feel very proud for having a role, playing a role in making that happen for this town. Ten years from now, you won't recognize this place, believe me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Further questions from counsel? Okay, anything else, Mr. Bram?
No.
Ms. Whitley?
The only thing I have is, I guess most of you know, I'm chairing the Rocky River RPO for the next two years, and we just had our longtime executive director resign and take a different position back in October, November, something like that. So we spent most, a lot of the holidays advertising and interviewing and going through that process. But I'm glad to say we have a new executive director who started a week ago today, last Monday. Lee Snuggs, some of you know him, he's from here. He was with DOT for about twelve years in a planning type function, and the last twelve years, he was with Cabarrus County Planning Department. So he speaks a language, he knows the DOT jargon that the rest of them don't, rest of us don't understand. So that was a big plus, and he's got good GIS experience and all that, so. I was going to have him come tonight, but he is going to be in Raleigh the rest of the week at an RPO executive director meeting for three days. That was more important. Plus, he's going to be up there meeting a bunch of DOT people that he's going to be working with. So he's making those contacts, and the learning curve, he'll have a learning curve, but hopefully it'll be shorter than we were afraid it might be. But probably I'll talk with him about coming to the cog meeting at the end of the month, maybe again, so we could meet whoever from the county and the other municipalities will be there. So offices up at Stanley County Commons, I think, across some partnership for children. So if you have a question, feel free to give him a call, just welcome him on board.
Think further? That's it. Thank you. Ms. Hall?
Couple of things, I probably should have mentioned this during the calendar time, and I'm just wondering, this is just for consideration. I do, I may not be right, but I think I am. April third, is that when we're going to do our open house at fifty-two at the waste? Is that when we're doing it?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that probably that should be added to our calendar, number one. And I think another one, and I just want to give a shout out, Mr. Robinson's still back there. Yes, he is. Kevin's still back there, and to all the folks in planning, I'm not going to call anybody out, but I'm just going to give those that have attended those trainings every other month, a shout out saying that they've done a great job by attending them. I know that Kevin has put a lot of time and effort, his whole department is, about getting these things planned. I know that they're a horrible time, not a horrible time, but maybe inconvenient for some folks. Every other month on a Tuesday night at six o'clock, it might be a good gentle reminder for us if those, if Kevin could get those dates to Paulette now and go ahead and put them on that calendar, so that when we see that calendar, it will continue to remind us. I know that it has not been as well attended as it could have been, and even planning and zoning board members, there have been several who have attended most of them, and some of them we've never seen there. So I just would shout out, that might be something else we capture on that calendar that would help remind each of us about that. And Owen, help me out, we need to all go and do our little training, is that right? Our security training?
Oh, shoot.
Is that right? I said that for you, so you wouldn't have to remind us to do that. We got to do that. And the last thing is, I just want to thank everybody at sitting here at the dais for attending last week's broadband session. That, the attendance was just outstanding. I've gotten some feedback from it, and folks were excited about them selecting Alamoale to come here, so thanks. And I don't want this, that to be a stopping, I'd like for that to be a jumping off to get us really started, not just broadband, but real broadband, not. What did you say?
A gig.
You want a gig at every house? That's right.
Mayor, to that point of the broadband, there's some bands I've seen around town that I'm trying to remember what's on the side of them, but they look like they're maybe doing some kind of wiring. Do we know if that's?
Are you seeing the, the company that's putting in all the Windstream's fiber? Is that what you're looking at?
It might be.
They've been here since October, so that's probably what you're seeing.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're.
I've seen them, they're like branding trucks, and I can't remember the name of them.
They have multiple contractors working for them, so you've got more than just one.
Does it sound like on, today when I came up PD, there was two or three of them, they're pulled over, they've got yellow lights blinking, and another doing something, and I thought that had to be some of the wiring.
I'm assuming that's one of the companies that's putting in some of the fiber for Windstream.
They were on fifty-two on Saturday working, Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, they've, they've really made a lot of progress around town.
Do you think they could come maybe and give us some kind of update on things, maybe?
As he said, he said, at that meeting, he was going to turn it on in March.
Second was in March.
Maybe they could come and tell us, so it's at least to those who weren't here at the broadband meeting, but also be included in our recording, in our minutes, if they could come maybe and tell us they flipped the switch or whatever, or something, maybe in March.
We'll keep up with them. Think further?
That's all.
Mayor, Mayor, I'd like to add one thing. Stanley County lost a great citizen today. Mr. Bill Mullenix died this afternoon. I can think of no one who's, who's been more of a promoter for Stanley County, done many things, very visible things for us, particularly at the airport, and he will be sorely missed, not only as a citizen, but as some of us, as a personal friend. We hate to see him go.
And the list could go on and on. Pfeiffer, the hospital, hospice, I mean, it could go on and on, and on. Thank you.
Judy, I was going to put you on the spot, but Martha Sue already brought up the April the third. Is counsel good with that? We've not formally adopted that date. Is counsel good with that?
I thought we had, I'm just, um.
I think we got the email, but.
It was an email. So we're good with that date, but I'm.
April third, the wastewater treatment plan. The water treatment plan. The fifty-two water treatment plan.
Anything else come for counsel? Anyone care to speak? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A, three, five, and six, to consult with the city attorney, real estate, and personnel.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion that we go back into regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.